Now we are.
Okay, here we go. Good evening. This is Larry Wallen Superintendent Paige Unified School District. Welcome. Very excited to be able to share with you this evening. We have our principals on standby. The plan is I want to go through a short video or PowerPoint presentation and our focus is on virtual learning. What does the late day look like in the life of your student? So I am going to present my PowerPoint. Just a second, I need to share it and we'll start there and then we'll then move through the principles. So here is our PowerPoint. And I did, am I? It's not, hold on. There we go. Now we're sharing. So this is about virtual learning. Again, this is about what it is in the day and the life of your students. And so second time around, practice makes a little bit better, not hopefully permanent on the bad side, but practice makes better. You know, one of the things that I never thought I would see is this, these are two young students on their iPads. And this is the kind of thing that you're going to see as we distribute the iPads in K two and the Chromebooks and three through 12. And these two young guys are collaborating on a game that they're playing to to learn how to use those iPads. So remote learning, distance learning, this is way where the way we're opening school on August the 10th. So that morning you get up, you pull out your devices and you begin internet based learning. And that internet based learning is deliver content, enable communication between the educator and the student. They they're not physically present in a traditional classroom, the students at home, the teachers in their classroom or at another location. Students have access, interact with online with their teachers. And the content is relayed through a delivery platform and we have two delivered platform, delivery platforms that we will be using. One is Google Classroom three to 12. That way students will be able to log in and they can see all the students in that classroom with that teacher. The second one is CSO. CSO will be K through two. And this is the one that they will be using. And the reason we chose CSO is it's more adaptable to that age group. So that'll give you an idea of what we're doing. One of the things you gotta do as we move into this is create a home environment that is conducive to learning. So that means some reorganization is going to have to take place. I had a very interesting conversation with my son last night. These are my two grandsons, nine and 10. They're going to Littleton School District in the valley. And they are starting school next week. And he was saying, well, we have to reorganize. We've got to provide them with desks and chairs. We've got to put them in the right place. Can they sit next to each other? Do they need to be a room apart? How do they react with each other? How are they going to react when there's challenges? You know, one's a little professor, one's the athlete. So it makes a very interesting dynamic in relation to what's happening. And of course you could have this. Now, forget the logos. This is not really good learning environment because that student could be very easily distracted. And so you, it's important that you begin that conversation with your students, your children, on how it's going to look in the classroom. So what I want to outline is just some home environment ideas for you to think about. First and most important is establish routines and expectations for your child. And that generally means that you've identified somewhere in the house, this is the learning environment. This is the student's desk as if he were at school or she were at school. So we established that if you have one, two, three, four students, then how do you spread them out so that they can be online at the same time? And then most importantly is just because they're online, especially K five, six, eight, you need to be taking an active role in their learning. You may need to begin to assist them and logging into their device, looking at the various applications. Walk them through instructions when they need that. So you want to be able to guide them, support them and help them move forward online. One of the things we ask you to do is allow your child to complete any test or assignments that are being graded and let them do that on their own. So because it's important for the teacher to be able to understand what the misconception that the students are experiencing so that they can provide reteach. Most importantly, create a safe, comfortable, distraction free place to work. And that's why we're going online virtual on August 10th as we start because right now we're not sure that we that the the metrics in terms of safety are there. On August the 7th, the Department of Arizona Department of Health and Human Services is going to reach out with metrics that we will look at in relation to when can we start brick and mortar on the ground. Partner with your child's teachers, reach out if you have any challenges. And then also remember screen time and we've been examining information and guidance as to how much screen time a student should have on. And if you have a kindergartner and a fifth grader, that screen time is going to be quite different. So that's going to create that challenge for you in terms of those routines and expectations. This is what we wanted to look like. I think this young man is is engrossed in what he's doing. He's actually writing a program. But he's there at his computer and he's hard at work. So once you establish that environment, it should look close to something like this. So let me communicate some general expectations that we are putting out so that we want you to understand this is not the same scenario that we went through from March to May. This is virtual learning. This is virtual learning at our best. We just had 23 teachers work the last two weeks designing lessons and learning how to prepare lessons. And they'll be sharing that with other teachers as we move forward. You may recall also that schools, the first day of school, what had been originally been scheduled August 4th. We've moved that to August 10th because that week of August 4th, teachers are going to be involved in creating that that learning environment. So each class will have a live synchronous component using Google Classroom or CSO depending on the age group. We'll be taking daily attendance based on student logins. There's also some other issues with attendance that will be following up around with with you on assignments and so on and so forth. Classes will begin on time, just like coming to school. And daily attendance. Word policies around attendance and during turning in work will be maintained. Sorry, lost my thought there. Students are expected to in classes and complete all their assignments on time. Most importantly, and this is very different from what occurred from March to to May, is teachers will be grading student work and giving feedback. They will be issuing and recording grades. So kind of a good luck learning environment right here. Of course, one of the, one of the things is one brother is in the pajamas and one's not. But they're both engaged in that computer. And of course, there's a lot of support there going on for that learning. So again, how you set that learning environment is absolutely critical for what that outcome is going to be. From time to time, some classes may use videos, video instructions, giving that through CSO or Google Classroom that need to be completed by the students before the end of class. One of the things that will be helpful is all classes will be recorded, the teacher presentation will be recorded. There'll be links to those recorded classes. So if you miss it, you'll be able to go back to CSO or Google Classroom and pick up that class. We want students to give their best effort. Most importantly, exhibit the best online class behavior and attend classes regularly. And help for many, we don't want any students online who are not well. Students should dress, ah, I bet you didn't think about that. Students should dress for school during the distance learning period, please. Shoes, we're not going to be looking, checking shoes, but no pajamas, please. I don't want a student logging in and all of them are sitting there in their pajamas. No pajamas, please. Students should have their cell phones in a different room during class unless they're using their cellphone as a hotspot. That way there's no distractions with that cellphone. Teachers will be communicating with parents and guardians during the announcing announcement, their office hours when they're available. And we'll talk about that as we go through this using their email. Most importantly, Power Schools will have your email address, the teacher's email address. So when you log into your Power School app, it's a click of a button to send an email to that student, that teacher. And most importantly, it's secure and it's logged. Staff will not provide cellphone numbers or personal email addresses to students. We want to use Power School to communicate that email and send that out. Get the best, give your best effort and your best online class behavior. Virtual schooling a day, we're going to go through our principals and let them talk to you briefly about what it is. When I go to Lakeview or when I get to Desert View, what's my day going to look like? I'm going to stop sharing my screen and I'm going to switch over to Nancy and she's going to start out with Lakeview. Okay, Nancy, take it away.
Hi there, Lakeview Eagles. Can you see my screen yet?
We see you. Yes.
See the screen? All right, great. All right, we are very excited about welcoming our new kindergarteners to Lakeview and welcoming back our first graders and our second graders. So for remote learning this year, our school day will begin right and early at 8:00 AM. Each Lakeview primary student will access their CSO classroom remotely by logging in through their iPad. And once they've entered their CSO classroom, they will join their teachers and classmates for virtual, a virtual morning meeting. So from 8:00 AM to 8:15, students will participate in a whole class morning meeting. During this time, teachers will take attendance, preview the day's activities and may even assist the students in setting daily or weekly goals. So following the morning meeting, we're going to be splitting our classes up into two different groups. So students in one classroom will become either part of Group A or Group B. And the reason we're choosing to do this is so that we have smaller groups and it provides teachers the opportunity to better monitor the participation during the synchronous or the real time learning that's happening in the classroom. So students will either move through their morning as part of Group A or part of Group B. So I'm going to talk you through what a morning might look like for a student in Group A first. So after the morning meeting for a group, a student in Group A, they will move right into one of our five special classes. So special classes are on a weekly rotation and students will attend a different special class each day of the week. This year we have decided to incorporate SEL into the rotation so that we can support the social and emotional needs of each of our students. After special classes, this group of students will rejoin their classroom teacher for again synchronous live instruction. And during this time, they will receive their reading, writing and math instruction with, excuse me, with their classroom teachers. They may be asked to work independently during this time while the teacher is able to monitor them in real time and provide immediate feedback. They'll be interacting with their classmates. So they will participate in synchronous live learning from 8:45 to 10:05 as part of Group A. So at 10:05, they're going to have a short break and then they'll move into independent practice from 10:20 to 11:40. During this time, students will be working independently and they will not be connected to a live teacher. They will be working in their CSO classroom, participating and engaging in activities that have been created by their teacher to allow them to practice their new learning. And then again, at 11:45, oh, I'm sorry. Let me back up. So they will do that independent practice as part of Group A from 10:30 to 11:45. At 11:45, they will rejoin their whole class for a wrap up time. So students will be together as a whole class first thing in the morning and then they will come together for a chance to wrap up and say goodbye to their classmates from 11:45 to noon. So I took you through the morning of a Group A student. And for a Group B student, it would look exactly the same except for the times would flip flop. So a Group B student would go into independent practice right after their morning meeting, move into their special class, their synchronous live learning with their teacher and then into the wrap up. So after their morning learning time with our classroom teacher, they would of course go to lunch. And then our afternoons would include intervention and enrichment time. And also allow for additional services and supports that the school would offer if our students were here. So just an example of Mr. Smith's class, he has students in Group A, students in Group B. And this is how they would roll through their morning, ensuring that they're getting synchronous live learning with their classroom teacher and asynchronous independent practice time. So we're looking forward to having all of our Eagles join us soon and thank you.
Thank you. Oh, one question while you're stopping the sharing, will the playground be open to students during onsite learning?
Yes, we will have our playground open to our students. We will ensure that we schedule that time so that we can allow for social distancing and that we can follow our safety and and health measures.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, let's go on to Mary for Desert View. What's that going to look like?
Good evening viewers. I'm Mary Stahl, your Desert View principal, and I'm going to share my screen with you as well.
There we are. Good job, Mary. Thank you.
All right. And we too are looking forward to seeing our third graders, although it will be online. And we're welcoming back our fourth and fifth graders. The third, fourth and fifth grade schedule will look different and this is due to scheduling our specials. So I'm going to walk you through a third grade typical day. So at eight o'clock, from eight o'clock to eight fifteen, the students in third grade will participate in a class huddle, which sounds very much like Lakeview's morning meeting. And the teachers will work with their, meet with their class to set goals for the day's learning. And this is actually true for third, fourth and fifth grade. All learning will begin at 8:00 AM with a morning meeting or class huddle. From eight fifteen to eight forty, we have all grade levels participating in reading and writing. And then from eight forty to nine oh five, they'll move into integrated learning, which is the social studies and the science content pieces. At nine oh five to nine fifteen, there will be a break and the teachers will lead this break. And this will be kind of like a movement and mindfulness break and getting your wiggles out because they will, students will have participated in some time and learning. So we want to make sure that they get a good break. Then from nine fifteen to nine forty, we have math scheduled. And then from nine fifty to ten ten, this is where it changes dependent upon if you're a third grader, a fourth grader or a fifth grader. So third graders will move into their specials class and we are rotating through five different specials and that's music, PE. And then we also have a SEL and character building session, a literacy session and then art. So depending on the day of the week, your student will be attending one of those specials. And then from 10:20 to 10:45 for third graders, they will participate in a reteach and enrich. And this will be guided by their reading or math formative assessment. Then from 10:45 to 11 o'clock, there will be an afternoon wrap up. And this is where the students will come together as a class and review their goals and their morning intentions and just kind of do some closure. And then we have from 11 to 11:30 independent reading scheduled for third grade. And that will be guided and facilitated by our reading specialist. And she will be in contact with them on on this independent reading piece. If you notice for fourth and fifth grade, we have the same schedule as well, just we flip flop in the after, well, in the early morning. So for a fourth grader, they're moving, they're doing their 10, from 10:05 to 10:20, they're doing their afternoon wrap up with their classroom. And then from 10:30 to 10:50, they'll move through the specials rotation. And then from 11 to 11:30, the independent reading. And then for fifth grade, we did the afternoon rap or the reteach and enrich, sorry, from nine forty to 10:05. And then the afternoon wrap up from 10:05 to 10:20. And then the independent reading 10:20 to 10:50 and then the specials rotation from 11 to 11:20. After at 11:30 to 12:30, then your student will participate in some one-on-one intervention or some asynchronous learning opportunities. So I am super excited to see everyone come back with this online learning. It's going to be, it's going to be a new experience for all of us. One thing I want you to keep in mind is that remote learning doesn't necessarily mean that they're on the internet the whole time. So there may be times when they're logging in for about 15 to 20 minutes and then they're participating with their class. And then they're moving out and working on an independent activity for a little bit. So it's going to be different.
Awesome. And then Mary, the students have Chromebooks, right?
Correct.
That Chromebook case with the headphones, the the flash drive, the mouse. Gosh, in every classroom or every home and every home. Wow. Thank you. Excellent. Okay, now we're going from fifth grade to sixth grade through eight. Ms. Covington, you want to share with us what a middle school schedule is going to look like?
Yes, and good evening. My name is Lisa Covington, the principal of Paige Middle School where every day we build relationships. So students can reach their potential, their highest potential academically, socially and cognitively. What we did for our middle school remote learning, you can see there that we are actually scheduled a little differently than the elementary in that students have built in throughout their schedule, a multiplicity of subjects. We have our core and then we also have our elective classes. The students will start their morning in the skills development class. The skills development class is in an advisory, very similar to what you heard as the morning meeting at Lakeview and the class huddle at Desert View. It is our advisory, the students will get their first social emotional check in during their skills development time. Then they'll move through the schedule through the remaining periods, taking classes in social studies, science, ELA and math in addition to their electives, which are about 38 minutes in length. Throughout these classes, the teachers are being asked to ensure that they have multiple engagement strategies, which also include a ten-two. Making sure that if they have direct instruction, that they are pausing every 10 minutes to give the students opportunity to collaborate with one another and or add to their notes. And that we're using an Avid strategy called the ten twenty-four seven. And this has to do with note taking. We will be introducing to the students a new way of note taking using a digital note taker and also a digital planner and a digital, a part of their digital binder. The students will go throughout the day on this, using this particular format of spending time in the classroom, collaborating with their teachers, collaborating with their peers. And then at the end of the day, 12:31, the teachers and the students will take a lunch break. At about 1:05, the teachers for the first week of remote learning, the teachers and the students will be asked to return to their skills development class where we will continue to make sure we are living out our mission by providing more a structured opportunity for more social emotional learning for the first 30 minutes of the teacher office time. This time will include things such as making sure we are creating the online environment that we want to have for remote learning, teaching students to be respectful, responsible and collaborating with their peers to come up with our respect agreements. After we have had an opportunity to collect data, the second part of the remote learning office hours will be attributed to reteach and enrich and scheduling the small group sessions for our students. So we are very excited about seeing students in the virtual world and helping them to really craft what it's like to work online, but also stay engaged with their teachers.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Covington. Tremendous. Gosh, we're now at eighth grade. Now we're ready to move to high school. Whoa, look at that, all in 25 minutes. Wouldn't that be nice if a student started in kindergarten and ended up in eighth grade, ready to go to high school in 25 minutes? Amazing. Ms. Martin, our high school principal is going to share with you what her students will see when they come back to school.
Hey, Sand Devil Nation. This is Martin here. Let me share my screen and then we'll get started. Somebody in the Zoom room, give me a thumbs up that you can see my screen. We'll use strategies like that in the virtual classroom. So let's get started. The first thing to know about Paige High School is that we are going to continue to use an AB schedule. So all of the information that I'm going over today will come to your house and through email in a newsletter form. So we are going to use the AB calendar again. And we are getting Chromebooks. Each student gets a Chromebook. So if you have more than one student at PUSD, each student will get a Chromebook to utilize for virtual learning. Monday through Friday, we're going to follow the same schedule. And what you might notice, especially if we have some students on here watching, is that advisory is not part of the timed out schedule. So you can see that we've got 1A and 6B, 2A and 7B, 4A and 9B, 5A and 10B. And what we're going to do is we're going to have 60 minute classes. So you'll follow your eight period schedule, four of them on an A day, four of them on a B day. And the skills that we typically work on in student advisory will be integrated into that 60 minutes. So one of the things that we really worked hard on last year was setting goals, checking our grades and really reaching for Cs or better in all of our classes. And so each of your teachers will help you stay organized, keep organized with your time, keep organized with your materials and keep organized with your thoughts. We're going to use Google Classroom. So now everything can be right at your fingertips. You'll have your calendar, you'll have your Google Drive, which you can keep lots of binders and tabs with. We are so also are going to send home some basic school supplies with your Chromebook. So y'all know how much you love those big binders, right? Those avid three inch binders. We're still going to provide them to you because we know for some students, that's a really intuitive way to keep organized. So it'll have tabs, it'll have paper, you'll have your pencil pouch with other things like highlighters and post-its, all of those learning materials in them. And that is the synchronous or real time live learning that will occur from eight to 12:24. So your teacher will have the Google Meet link in each of your Google classrooms. At eight o'clock, you'll click on your meet to join your classroom. And of course, it never hurts to be a little bit early as well. Because on time behavior, we know makes for successful citizens after high school. And at nine oh eight, you'll go to your 2A or 7B Google classroom, you'll click on your Google Meet. And synchronous or real time learning will begin. So remember, this is the teacher and you and your classmates that are in that same, let's say biology class with you, learning together at the same time, just in a new setting. So the new setting is the virtual classroom, which you'll access through your Chromebook. Lunch is from 12:30 to one. And because our school day is still eight to three, student learning will continue from one o'clock to three o'clock. It's really important at the high school level that we're putting in that time. Teachers may ask you to do some meaningful deliberate practice. Maybe you just completed a lesson in Algebra I over exponentially. over exponentials and you have some practice to do in the afternoon. Maybe you have something you need to complete before your next class meeting. We call that a flipped classroom, where you may watch a video, do a reading, view a pre-recorded instruction to prepare for the next lesson. And of course, we have lots of classrooms here at Page High School that utilize project based learning. So that afternoon time from one to three would be time to check something off of that to do list for your project. During that time, we also have teacher office hours. So that's from one to two thirty. And here are some just potential uses of teacher office hours. So students may participate in any of that independent practice that I just went over. And maybe they need to email their teacher to see if they can get a response back. There are also chat and discussion options in the Google Classroom. So they could communicate through the Google Classroom from time to time. Some other things that students may be asked to do in the afternoon, check in with their teacher, small group for reteach. We also have access to some concept recovery modules through Edge Annuity. We are aware that we missed nine weeks of learning and we're working hard. And we all get back here into Page High School to find ways to recapture that learning so that students can move forward and still find growth and progress. And then the collaboration or meeting time is for our teachers. Our teachers do meet up with parents and students. And I think Ms. Jazman is going to talk more about that as well. And so that time, two thirty to three forty five is reserved for collaboration and meeting times for our staff and teachers. Now, that doesn't mean that a student can't email their teacher during that time. But it's important to know that from one to two thirty, teachers will be working directly with the communication tools of email, Google Meet, to meet the needs of all of our learners at Page High School. There you have it, Sand Devils. So just a little bit as Superintendent Wallen unmutes his mic. It is important for me as a parent and employee of the district to understand that we have extensive training planned for our teachers. We do believe this to be very true. We know what good teaching is, but our setting has changed. And so it's really important that we as principals provide our teachers and staff the training and support to meet the needs of this new classroom, which is a virtual classroom. But we're going to continue to reinforce what we know as good teaching so that we can create lots of learning in PUSD.
Excellent. Thank you. And there's a trick called unmute your mic when you talk. Otherwise, your mouth is just moving and nothing's happening. Gosh, wow, all the way to high school. What an exciting, exciting time, a new way, a new day, a new time. One of the things we want to do is let's switch back. Ms. Case is here, who is our preschool director. And I'd like for her just to share with you what's expected for preschool or preschool, yes, preschool.
All right. Thank you. Hello, everyone. So our preschool is going to look a little different, of course, because we're dealing with three and four year olds. We will be using the same type of platforms. We'll be using CSO and Google Classroom. We will be doing that synchronous learning where kids are going to be engaging with their teachers and their classmates during some morning meetings and activities. And then we'll also be working with the parents and the students in addressing different activities and learning activities, as well as hopefully group activities that they can do to help meet some of their IEP goals and looking at those services and working with our providers to do some of those services as well virtually. So it's going to be an exciting time and something new. And will really give us an opportunity to see what we can do with this. So we're really excited about it.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Well, we want to ask some, I have some questions that have been sent in. Thank you for those of you who sent in those comments. The first question, we're going to go through that. Ms., Dr. Hubble is right behind me. Excuse me, trying to connect in. So we'll keep watching for her face to appear as we move forward. But the question is, what is the plan for students who will need intervention sessions on reading or other subjects? Ms. Jas, Jasman, maybe you can answer that question for us.
Yes, I'd be happy to. All of our students with IEPs, their IEPs will be followed. We will be working together, the special education teachers with the general education teachers to make sure students' needs are being met and they're accommodated according to their IEPs. The, the paraprofessionals will also be trained in the virtual learning process so that they can be part of the virtual learning classrooms and support students individually during the afternoon times or however the students need.
Thank you. Excellent. Another question, if Chromebooks or iPads can't access the internet, how will that work? Will my student have to print off the material? Anyone want to take a shot at that one? Go ahead, Ms. Martin.
Um, so one of the things that we've been talking about the high school is that flash drive that comes with your Google or your Chromebook pack. It will be super important that when you are within Wi-Fi range, that you go to your Google Classroom and you download any of the PDFs, various documents. You can basically download anything to your Chromebook and then save it to your flash drive. Something to note for parents and students that are watching is that many of these things we know are going to require some teaching in and of itself. And so our teams at our schools are preparing lessons specifically to teach these skills. So that's really important. I know as a parent, that makes me feel good as well, that I know that my child's teacher will be patient and have grace and make sure that, that they know how to use the tools that we're going to ask of them as we continue to learn virtually.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay, I have another question. I'm going to ask that question. Then I'm going to stop my video and mute. Dr. Hubble is right behind me and when I come back, it won't be me, it'll be Dr. Hubble. Because when we have a couple of questions about Sage and Sand, and she'll talk a little bit about Sage and Sand. Because she's using my computer, she'll not be able to show any of her PowerPoint presentations. But you'll get to see her and talk with her about Sage and Sand. So the question is, what is the plan, what is the plan for literacy testing for reading and math? Who can, who can take that one on? Just jump right in.
The, this is Ms. Covington, and I can't speak to. We were informed that we will be doing assessments remotely. And so figuring out the logistics of that is still a work in progress or in process. But we do know that as important as it is to you as, as parents, guardians and family members, it is equally important to us because we want to make sure that we are starting the students off where with the lessons that they need in order to build their, their strength, capacity and knowledge. I know a couple of things that we are doing at the middle school to assess particularly in reading also include their achieve level set, which we will be doing remotely as well.
Great. And with that, I introduce Dr. Hubble, our Sage and Sand Manson Mesa principal.
Good evening. My name is Strina Hubble. I'm the principal of Manson Mesa High School and Sage and Sand Virtual Academy. I'm just going to share a little bit of information regarding both schools. Manson Mesa High School is an alternative school whose mission is to create a small, individualized learning environment to support students behinding credits. Manson Mesa High School offers a multimedia rich curriculum for grades ten through twelve, aligning to state and national standards. Manson Mesa High School students can work at any time of day while working in Edge Annuity. Attendance is monitored as students are logged in. Full-time students are expected to log on daily. Certified ELA and math teachers provide synchronous instruction, monitor student progress and interact with students through an internal messaging system for those students enrolled in ELA and math classes. Now switching over to Sage and Sand Virtual Academy. Sage and Sand Virtual, Virtual Academy offers a multimedia rich curriculum for grades K through twelve, aligning to state and national standards. All Arizona colleges, universities and military programs recognize credits earned through SSVA. All core courses through Sage and Sand Virtual Academy meet NCAA eligibility requirements through our partnership with Edge Annuity Instructional Services. SSVA students can work at any time of day. Attendance is monitored as students are logged in and working on coursework. Full-time students are day certified teachers monitor student progress and interact with students through an internal messaging system and provide student teacher conferencing when needed. Technical support is available by phone during the day or by email on evenings and weekends. One-to-one Chromebook technology devices are offered. Accommodations and direct services is provided through special education. And students are able to participate in athletic programs. As looking at the K five schedule, currently your student is enrolled as a remote learner under Desert View or Lakeview Elementary School. After state approval, your student will be transitioned to Sage and Sand Virtual Academy. Once transitioned, your student will be assigned to an SSVA teacher. Your student will begin their day by logging on through CSO classroom each morning and they will engage in a class meeting. In this class meeting, they will have access to social emotional curriculum, community building opportunities and go through an agenda for the day. So they will feel successful to transition to the next content area. Through math and reading, students will engage, engage in the self-paced virtual world of PathBlazer, which is our online content portal. Students will work at their own pace and follow through their modules with support from their teacher. The teacher will be facilitating the learning utilizing PathBlazer for their learning opportunities. Looking at six through twelve secondary schedule, currently parents are returning or updating enrollment documents through Page Middle School or Page High School. After returning or updating the enrollment documents, we ask that parents contact Jessica Dixon to set up an appointment to, to select courses from the Edge Annuity course catalog. Once your students' schedule has been set, they will be ready to begin online learning on August tenth. Students will be contacted by a Sage and Sand Virtual Academy teacher to assist in logging into Edge Annuity to begin completing the modules. Our online teachers will be available to closely monitor student progress, respond promptly to questions and requests from students and families, maintain timely grading of submitted student work and enter pertinent information into the provided student information system. Our teachers also are required to hold regular office hours each day, monitor student pacing, complete regular proactive status checks and calls and reach out to students and families if questions or concerns arise. Virtual learning students will need a Chromebook computer and an internet connection.
Thank you. Wow, that's going to be an interesting program. I had a couple of questions for Sage and Sand. Will Sage and Sand be accredited? Yes, as she spoke, those, those courses will be accepted. Who will be the teachers at Sage and Sand? We have a couple of people working on that and that will be put together as we create the courses. And it's going to be different because remember, this is virtual. This is virtual. Students don't come to school, they stay at home. They log in and they begin to take their classes that way. So they'll be assigned a mentor to look at, look over them. When will you be able to give us more specific information regarding Sage and Sand? Well, that sounded pretty specific to me and it is critical. And I think it's going to be a great environment. I think it's going to, oh my gosh. Mary, does Manson Mesa have its own mascot?
Yes, it does. We are the Falcons.
Oh, no, Dr. Hubble, we're going to have to get a mascot for Sage and Sand. Whoa. Think about that. So as the students get enrolled, that first class will be, have a lot of say in what that mascot's going to look like. Wow, that's going to be awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, principals. What a team to work with. I'm very excited about where we're going. Just to back up parents and give you a little bit more information. As you know, the governor last week issued a new executive order, which has some impact on us. One is requiring the Department of Health and Human Services, which I mentioned earlier, to give us the metrics for reopening school on the ground. And that, those metrics are due August the seventh. I expect they will look something like saying the infection rate in your community is at five percent or below, that there's been no new cases in fourteen days and some other metrics that I'm sure our healthcare professionals will put together. Once we meet those metrics, we'll be ready to move back into the classroom, move, move back on the ground. Now, what we are doing is asking our governing board, when they make that decision for us to move back, that they give us a two-week transition window so that we can have a smooth transition and be prepared to bring kids back on campus and move forward. One of the other pieces that's important to know in the government's executive order is he wanted us to define a place, quote, where children who have no place to go, unquote. Well, for us, that would be homeless. And I don't think that's quite what he meant. It meant it's a place for kids to go who might need internet access and what that looks like. We launched a team of teachers this morning to work on this and set that up. I can tell you just as a preliminary that we intend to have K five at Desert View and starting in the cafeteria and then overflow in the gym if we have more, more students than we have capacity for. And then six through twelve will be in the high school gym and our cafeteria and then move, excuse me, into the gym. We're putting all those protocols together because remember, safety is our number one priority. So we have to establish the entry. We have to establish what that's going to look like. And that's going to be a space for your student to come and participate in his online education. They'll have to bring their Chromebooks with them or their iPads with them. We'll have staff there to supervise. There'll be an entry procedure. There'll be temperature checks. Face masking will be required because we're using the cafeterias and the gymnasiums if we need overflow. We'll be maintaining that social distance. Excuse me, so they won't have to wear that, that face mask continuously and, and be able to have a little breather in that respect. We will not be providing anything other than a seat and a chair and internet access. We'll not provide any meals or anything else at this point. That will start August the seventeenth. And we will have everything in place and you'll have a lot more information about that opportunity. Basically, it's going to run from about eight o'clock to three o'clock during the day. Students can check in, go to their assigned seat, involve themselves in their lessons, their internet, and then check out at whatever time the parents decide to do that. But we will probably, I'm pretty sure we're going to have a check-in, checkout procedure, parents. High school may be a little bit different, but specifically K eight, we want to be very sure that the students leave us as safely as you drop them off. So that's in the works. That just came out, as I said, Thursday. So those are the programs that we've got in place. We're ready to roll. We're ready to start the school year August tenth. Our teachers are now on the ground. It'll be coming in, what, Thursday, I believe, Friday? And then all next week, they'll be practicing how to do virtual learning lessons. That's going to be a challenge. Needless to say, this is a totally different world than what I'm used to after thirty-five years in education. And it's going to be a very interesting world. The only thing I can tell students is computers never forget anything. So there's no more, I forgot my assignment. There's no for, I lost, the dog ate my paper, my brother crushed it up and gave it to the cat. None of that's going to work. None of that's going to work because it's all going to be virtual. It's going to be electronic. And so that's going to create all kinds of new dynamics. Uh, we're also going to have a, a team put together for social-emotional learning for those students who've had some stress and difficulty uh during this time as a result of the pandemic, as a result of possible loss of family members and so on. That team will be in place to work with students and help them move through that, that process. Gosh, a lot going on in Page School District. A lot to be proud of, to be a part of. I'm going to open it up and see, does anyone else want to add anything before we close? Any other, any other comments? Uh, Nancy, any comments?
No, thank you. I'm just, I'm excited for this opportunity. I'm looking forward to the learning that's going to happen for all of our students and our teachers and families. Um, I believe it's going to be positive. It's going to be new and um quite an adventure.
Thank you. Uh, Mary? Any final comments?
Um, no, just that I too am excited about the new learning that's going to take place. Um, this is going to be a great opportunity for all of us to, to move forward into the twenty-first century, so it's going to be really fun.
Really, the twenty-first century, you're up. Uh, Beth, any, any comments to share?
I too am looking forward to it. I think it will, this year will present some unique challenges and some very rewarding opportunities to work with all students together.
Thank you. Ms. Covington?
As well, excited to see you Panthers. We've missed you so much, so we're excited to see your faces in the virtual world. And uh seventh and eighth graders, keep a lookout for information on two new electives that we were able to add. Um, a yearbook and also digital media. So if you are interested in something like this and being a part of our news channel, look for that information. Um, Mr. Moore will be teaching those classes. We want to see you, so check in. We want to see you every day, attendance every day, and we will come find you via phone mail message or phone if you don't show up in the virtual.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Case?
Yeah, I just think this is going to be a really great opportunity for us to collaborate with parents, to work together as a team and really have this educational experience be positive. And um, I have full confidence that our teachers and in our district are working hard to make this the best year that they can make it and to be prepared to um reach out to families and have that engagement as well. So I think as partners with our families, we're really going to make this a successful year.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Martin?
I just wanted to um leave our Sand Devils um and parents with possibly an answer to one of the questions that was submitted about uh CTE and electives. We are super proud of our CTE and elective programming at Page High School, and it will not um end because we're virtual learning. Um, we're taking steps with all of our teachers to create that virtual setting, uh to create learning kits. There most likely will be uh various times throughout remote learning that you will be asked to or um delivered with your food services, uh various learning materials to make sure that those programs can still be successful. Go Sand Devils!
All right, thank you. Outstanding. Well, one of the questions I, I had that came in was what happens if I don't have internet access? We're working on that. Tomorrow morning at eight thirty, I'm boarding a bus, and we're taking that bus to Kaibato to simulate what that kind of accessibility might look like. Uh, and a couple of other people are going with me. We have ordered uh three hundred what's called hotspots uh that you can use their data, data plant, they're a data plan, not a voice, but a data plan, so that you can connect your Chromebook through that hotspot. The critical piece is you've got to have line of sight or access to that cell tower, that cell connection. Most of you have cell phones, and each one of those cell phones is a hotspot by itself. So there's always those opportunities as well, and we'll try to get those hotspots in the right places. We have ten buses that have, I'll call them mega hotspots on them, so that twenty people could park around the bus and access that hotspot once we get that set up. We're doing everything we can to provide that, that accessibility, but you're going to have to meet us halfway and respect that. I am in touch with uh the Department of Naval Division of Education, uh DODI, on how, what other things we can do to create that. Um, there is a wild rumor out there that there may be internet, uh internet fiber cable coming across from Kaibato by October, and we'll look at that and see what happens when we do. I'll be doing chapter meetings the next two or three Sundays or Saturdays, talking with chapters about can they open up their Wi-Fi, can, or their ethernet? Here's the deal, people, you need to talk to your chapter representatives. If we come out and install a Wi-Fi access point and they will plug their ethernet cable into that Wi-Fi access point, we can have more opportunities for access. That's something you need to talk to your chapter officials about. That would make it work really, really well if we could do that. Um, and so those are some of the things that we are pounding on every day to get it up. So tomorrow, I'll be going to Kaibato. I'll be looking at what possibility is going to be, maybe even all the way to inscription house, depends on how far that bus is going to go. And so that's, those are the kinds of things that we're planning. Every day is a new day, and every day has its new challenges. But we are persevering, and I can tell you as the superintendent, I am so blessed to have such an awesome team of leaders here helping me and putting together the programs for your children in their schools. With that, I'm going to sign off. Uh, if you have questions, email us, contact us. We're ready to communicate whenever. So more information is coming. Listen to the radio, listen to the um um, one of those things called the messengers that come out of Power Schools. Uh, and most importantly, good, let me say that too, be sure you get your Power School app on your phone. That will be a primary method of communication. That way you can check on your students' grades, and we can also set that Power School app to send you a text if that student is not performing where we think it should be. We're going to be a B-school by next summer. That is our goal, and we need everyone on board to make that happen. So with that, our second town hall is closed, and we will be having more of those coming up. Oh, by the way, one more thing I forgot. We have a new website. Go to that new website, check it out. We're still putting new information in, taking new information out. So that's a, a work in progress, but it is a lot better than the old website. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for what you've done this evening. Have a great evening. Goodbye.